All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, Board Work Session for Wednesday, August 28, 2024. It is 9:02 a.m. My name is Ty Mensor, Chair of the Board. To my right is Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Rice Chair, Commissioner Caroline Mahia, to my left Commissioner Gary Edwards and Emily Klaus, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder. We have a three-hour work session. Public virtual attendance will be available for most of it. Two items on the agenda, and the first one is the appeal of an hearing examiner's decision, specifically U.S. Market Truck Stop. It's a quasi-judicial hearing to be heard by the Board of County Commissioners, and we're going to open up with that. So let me go straight to that script. There's no preliminary matters. Okay, so, good morning to everybody who's here. I know folks are here, and as you need to come over and get closer to the podium, feel free. My name is Ty Mensor, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. I will be presiding over today's appeal. Here with me today, as I mentioned earlier, Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Caroline Mahia, on my right, Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Emily Klaus, to my left. Today's date is Wednesday, August 28, 2024. Time is approximately 9:03 a.m. Thurston County Board of County Commissioners is now on the record in an appeal of the hearing examiner's decision dated July 2, 2024, filed by the Confederated Tribes of the Chehalis Reservation. The hearing examiner's decision dismissed an appeal of an administrative decision to approve a 12,347-square-foot store building, square foot-square building, with a 2,049-square-foot attached restaurant along with retail and truck fueling pumps at 19415 Ivan Street, Southwest Rochester, Washington, which was approved through a combined land use approval and State Environmental Policy Act, or SEPA, mitigated determination of nonsignificance on April 3, 2024, I believe. The hearing examiner issued an order, a ruling for summary judgment, and found that, first, the appellant lacks standing to challenge the SEPA MDMNS, or mitigated determination of nonsignificance, and that, second, the zoning appeal lacked merit on its face and dismissed it without evidentiary hearing. Here, the hearing examiner determined there is no genuine issue as to any material fact, and that judgment was proper as a matter of law. Whether summary judgment was proper is a question of law, and is reviewed by this board de novo, meaning it will review the hearing examiner's decision anew to determine whether there were any material facts at issue, and if summary judgment was proper. Standing, an appeal of the hearing examiner's decision with respect to a threshold determination may only be appealed to the Superior Court in accordance with Thurston County Code 1709160K. As such, the Board will not be addressing this issue regarding standing. On zoning, as to the zoning appeal, the appellant makes two arguments. First, the appellant contended that the project is not permitted in the Planned Industrial Park District, or PI zone. The hearing examiner disagreed and determined that the proposed fueling stations submitted by the applicant are service stations as contemplated under Thurston County Code 2027020. Second, the appellant contended that the approved uses can be allowed in the PI zone only if they primarily serve other uses in the industrial park. The hearing examiner decided that the appellant failed to offer any evidence or even serious arguments substantiating its position with respect to zoning, that the issue presents a legitimate question of ambiguity regarding code interpretation, that in questions of code interpretation, deference is appropriately given for the interpretation of that agency or official charged with implementing and administering the code in question, and that therefore proceeding to the hearing, to a hearing on this code interpretation issue would be futile. In summary, the issues before, the issue before the Board of County Commissioners today is, number one, whether the appellant's zoning appeal lacks merit on its face and was appropriately dismissed without hearing. The appellant has also claimed that the hearing examiner committed the following errors: whether the hearing examiner erred in that the decision failed to rely on substantial evidence pursuant to Procedure 9.3D; whether the hearing examiner erred in finding the project complied with Thurston County Code 2037040, and that transportation analysis was sufficient; whether the hearing examiner erred in finding the project complied with Thurston County Code 2030040, and that project uses were permitted in the underlying zoning; whether the appellant's opening brief should be stricken; and whether the appellant's evidence is properly before the Board of County Commissioners. These above issues include procedural questions, and two, five and six of the ones I went through, and two that relate to the zoning appeal. Before we get started, that's an overview of where we're at procedurally, and we're going to continue with appearance of fairness declarations from the Board of County Commissioners. In quasi-judicial appeals, the Board is subject to the appearance of fairness doctrine, codified in Chapter 4236 of RCW. Under this doctrine, Board members are not authorized to have ex parte communications with the parties after an appeal has been filed with the Board. However, if there have been ex parte communications since the appeal was filed, or communication or relationships with any of the parties that may appear to impact their impartiality, then the substance of that communication or relationship needs to be disclosed. In addition, each Board member must be able to impartially judge this case on the facts contained in the record and the applicable law. This time, I will ask each Commissioner to make a declaration for the record. I'm hoping each of you have it in front of you, and I'm going to just ask, I'm going to go one by one and ask you to make the declaration. So I'll start with Commissioner Klaus.
Since the appeal was filed on July 15, 2024, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties related to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record and applicable law.
Commissioner Edwards.
Since the appeal was filed on July 15, 2024, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record and applicable law.
Commissioner Meehan.
Since the appeal was filed on July 15, 2024, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record.
Vice Chair Fornier.
Since the appeal was filed on July 15, 2024, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties related to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record and applicable law.
And then I will affirm that since the appeal was filed on July 15, 2024, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record and applicable law. Do any of the parties have any objections or challenges for any Board member to decide the case? Thank you. Okay, let's get to today's proceeding. The appellant and applicant each have an opportunity to present 15 minutes of oral argument. Oral argument may not present new information or evidence, but must be limited to the evidence in the record and the specific issues raised in the appellant's appeal. The appellant may reserve a portion of its 15 minutes for rebuttal argument after the applicant's 15 minutes. I understand the department will not be presenting oral argument, but is available to answer questions from the Board. The Board, if it has any questions, will ask some of the parties during or after argument. I will encourage you to keep track of time yourself, but I will hold up two fingers when you have two minutes left in your presentation time. Does the, do any of the parties have any questions before we begin the argument? No? Okay. So we're going to open the hearing, and the appellant will have 15 minutes to present, and give me a chance to open up a timer, just so I can see it. It'll be easier for me if I, we start together. Ready? I always used to use boards, so it's, it's no problem. Perfect. Okay, let's go ahead and get started.
Good morning, Honorable Commission Chair and Commissioners. My name is Ezra Hammer with the Law Firm of Jordan Ramus, here on behalf of the Confederated Tribes of the Chehalis Reservation. With me here today is Tribal Counciloral Press Secretary Christine Connolly from Kittleson and Associates. We understand that we have 15 minutes. We will take 10 for the initial presentation and hold five for rebuttal. Now, we're with you here this morning, as you mentioned, to discuss the U.S. Market Truck Stop project, which consists of fuel pumps for commercial trucks and non-commercial motor vehicles, as well as a restaurant and a convenience store. Land use approvals for the project consist of site plan review, as well as the state environmental policy, or SEPA determination. As we shall discuss this morning, the site plan review approvals issued for the project are fatally flawed and require a substantial reworking in order to ensure proper compliance with your Thurston County Development Code. And my client has built substantial projects in the county, and, when doing so outside of tribal land, has complied with all of the applicable Development Code regulations, and we merely ask that you apply the same standards to this project and ensure that the applicant and the project comply with those standards as well. In doing so, we can ensure that all project applicants are treated fairly and equitably in accordance with the Thurston County Code. Now, as a threshold issue, the project, project uses are only permitted in accordance with the underlying zoning. Here, the zoning is planned industrial park. As the name suggests, the Planned Industrial Park, unlike generalized industrial zoning, is intended to encourage comprehensive planning within the zone. To that end, the PI zoning only permits limited commercial uses, and those commercial uses must primarily serve other uses within the planned industrial park. The key feature here is the inward-looking nature of the commercial uses, which must primarily serve other uses within the industrial park district rather than the public at large. Here, the project applicant wishes to build a large gas station and convenience store to serve commercial and non-commercial vehicles traveling up and down the I-5 corridor and east-west over 99 Southwest and US 12. Despite the PI zoning requirements, the project is not designed in any way to serve the nearby machinery rental businesses, or truck wash, or any other use within the current PI zoning. Simply put, it is merely there to serve people traversing between Vancouver and Olympia and Tacoma and the Washington coast. Now, had the county wished to allow for generalized zoning on this site, the county was free to do so, and they could have zoned in accordance and allowed for general commercial or generalized industrial uses, but you did not do so. And in choosing the PI zone, you require that projects comply with the requirement to build with only inward-facing commercial uses to serve the immediate project area. Now, the project applicant will tell you I'm wrong. They will say that the permitted uses comply with the zoning because staff said so, and staff is entitled to complete deference. But deference here is only granted when the county has actually spoken on the matter. No one is entitled to deference when they remain silent. And here, despite the critical findings that would need to be made to allow for these commercial uses in the PI zone specifically, the staff report approving the project contains zero analysis and absolutely no findings explaining why the permitted uses, or the proposed uses, rather, should be permitted in the PI zone. Frankly put, there is nothing on the record before you here today that explains how staff came to the conclusion that these commercial outward-focused uses are permitted in the PI zone. Now, this insufficiency does not warrant deference in and of itself. Indeed, it appears that there has simply been no review of the proposed uses as they apply to the underlying zoning, and therefore, it's no wonder that the project wasn't properly approved in the first place. In addition to the fact that the project is completely inappropriate due to its outward-focused nature, the convenience store portion of the project is wholly improper in that the PI zone only allows for permitted uses which are permitted in the first instance regardless of whether or not they serve the zone. And the commercial uses which are permitted are listed here, A through D. Importantly, convenience store is not listed. Because it is not a delineated commercial use, the only way that the county could permit conceivably, a convenience store here use, is through an unclassified use determination, which you spell out in your code section, and which requires staff to make written findings that demonstrate a similarity of use with the proposed use and a permitted use, and importantly, consistent with the intent of the district itself. Again, we're talking about findings, and those findings are nowhere in the staff's report. They are nowhere in the public record because they were not conducted. So, the project, at its very core, fails twice. First, because there are no findings related to these outward-focused commercial uses in the PI industrial zone, and second, because the unclassified use has no unclassified use determination with it that we or any other party would have been able to challenge had staff actually engaged in that analysis. However, the failures do not end there. I'm going to turn things over now to Kittleson, to Christine with Kittleson and Associates, who's going to discuss the insufficiency of the traffic analysis, not the mitigation measures, which the applicant will want to talk about, but the, but the actual analysis that your code requires in Thurston County Code Section 20600303-E. And if you'll permit us 30 seconds, I'll swap out some boards here.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christine Connolly. I'm a traffic engineer with Kittleson and Associates, based in Portland. I've spent most of my career doing traffic impact analyses and reports similar to the one that was presented for the project in question. I've done hundreds of them, primarily in the states of Washington and in Oregon. We were retained to do a review of the 2022 traffic impact analysis that, for the approved project, and we, we prepared a summary document or a memorandum that should be in your, in your materials for the appeal, which summarized our comments and concerns with the traffic analysis. Today, I'll talk about our primary concern, which was the way that the trips were generated for the proposed site. The, the trip generation is really important because that's the basis upon which the future traffic volumes through the surrounding study area are estimated, and so if that's wrong, then the, the analysis that comes out of the model is incorrect, and the mitigation that's determined to be needed is incorrect or insufficient. So, what we found in reviewing the traffic study is that the trip generation was based on the land use code for truck stop, which at first glance appears to be the correct use for the site, but when you look at the description of the land use code, it actually only accounts for truck trips to a site. So, it may be appropriate for a truck stop that doesn't have any other uses that are available to the traveling public, but in this case, the site has vehicular, you know, passenger vehicle fueling positions, as well as restaurant uses and convenience store that will generate trips that are not just truck trips. So, in, in the memorandum, we prepared our own trip generation estimate using the standard rates in the Institute of Transportation Engineers ITE Trip Generation Manual, and we used both the truck, truck stop code, and then another code for a general service station and, and convenience store use, so that we could analyze both the truck trips and the passenger vehicle trips properly. And what we found was that the trip generation could be up to almost five times what was actually analyzed in the TIA for the project. So, we put together this exhibit, I'm sorry, it's a little small for you, we can move it closer if needed, but just to show you where that could impact the analysis results. So, at all, these are the four intersections that were studied. If the higher appropriate trip generation were used, then all four intersections would have higher traffic volumes, and therefore, higher levels of delay than were actually reported in the traffic study for the development. In particular, are areas of concern where we feel that there might be additional mitigation where the correct trip generation to be used, is the northbound off-ramp, here, and then kind of blown up there. It's operating at a level of Service D, in, which is the standard, however, with additional trips, that could bump up to an unacceptable level of service. Also, the queues on the off-ramp under, under the conditions in the report, without the additional trips, are already exceeding the storage on the off-ramp. So, what that, what that means is if the center lane backs up far enough down the ramp to where the ramp narrows and only has a single lane, it's actually blocking vehicles from getting into the left-turn lane or the right-turn lane to get where they're going, and those queues compound on each other in that, in that center lane and add together because they can't get around. So, we feel like it should be looked at whether those lanes should be lengthened to allow vehicles to get around the other cars in the queue. Additionally, the Ivan Street intersection is where the site gains access, and it's a stop-controlled intersection. It doesn't have a traffic signal, so everybody leaving the site needs to find a gap in traffic in order to turn onto SR 12. And as there are more trips trying to do so, the delay becomes more and more, and we feel like it may not meet the county standards under the actual trip generation of the site. With all that said, I'll summarize. We feel like the traffic study needs to be updated to accurately represent the proposed site and the impacts on the surrounding transportation network in order for the county and the Department of Transportation to adequately review the site impact and the mitigation proposed.
Okay, as I see, you've got three and a half minutes left, and I'm going to ask you a question, though, and I won't count that, if that's okay, and it's probably for you, sir. I didn't quite.
Oh, my name's Ezra Hammer.
Hammer, okay, Mr. Hammer. Just one question from me. Did the, the hearing officer obviously reside, relied on the idea that staff gets deference to interpret, and you mentioned that. You, you seem to argue, though, that there's no such deference when there's not, like, written findings or, or some analysis that's shown, and I'm wondering, is there, do you have authority for that position, that that deference is only limited to a situation where there's written findings, or, you know, because that kind of seems to be core to the hearing examiner's decision?
Well, the, the authority is actually in Thurston County Code. The fact that you have delineated, limited, particularized uses, and only allow for unclassified uses in the instance where findings are made, is in and of itself facial evidence that the county must make findings in order to allow for these uses to occur. So, for the county not to make those findings, there is no deference to grant them. Deference is really applicable in a situation where it's a he-said, she-said situation, and when both people present evidence, one is granted greater weight than the other. Here, we have an instance where staff has presented no evidence, and your code speaks to the fact that evidence would need to be presented in order to allow for these very uses to occur.
Which code is that?
Other questions? Okay, Commissioner Meehan.
Yeah, I just have a follow-up. Which specific code is that?
So, here, we're in the Thurston County Code, Chapter 20.27, and this is specifically for your Planned Industrial Park District. So, this zoning is different than your other industrial zones, and in it, section, subsection 020 has delineated uses, which are commercial uses which may be permitted, again, so long as they are outward-focused. And one of those uses which is not delineated here is obviously the service station. And so, if that service station were to be something that staff thought was appropriate, they would need to go down here to subsection F, unclassified uses, and make a two-part finding to demonstrate that the unclassified use was both similar to a listed use, and importantly, consistent with the overall intent of the district. Once those findings were made, that, those findings could produce the basis for potential deference, but absent those findings, there's nothing for you to rely on to grant deference to.
Any other questions for Mr. Hammer?
I, just for clarification, your outside position, I guess, I'm, I'm curious about, is this only a commercial vehicle stop, or do other vehicles in the area, are they able to stop and get fuel at that location?
Yeah, absolutely, and that's a great point here, because we have, there's really four components to the project. There's fuel stops, fuel pumps for large commercial vehicles, there's fuel pumps for non-commercial vehicles such as cars and trucks, there's the restaurant, and there's the convenience store. Now, all of these uses can be both inward and outward-serving in nature, but when you put a large gas station and a convenience store next to a highway off-ramp, the assumption there is that the overwhelming majority of that use will be for people traversing the freeway system. And in order to ensure that those uses comply with the requirements found in your code section for PI zoning, staff would need to demonstrate that those uses were in fact focused primarily towards the other industrial uses within the PI zone, and we don't have that evidence on the record.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Let's bring up the applicant, and, correct. I'm going to reset this. Let me know when you're ready to go, and we'll start your timer. Ready? Okay, proceed.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here today. My name's Chris Pierce Wright, Counsel for the applicant. I'll, I'll take the issues in the reverse order that the appellant raised them. We had a presentation just now about a traffic analysis. As you mentioned at the outset, Commissioner Mensor, you can't take new evidence here. Basically, what just happened was an engineer provided testimony to you about an engineering analysis for what would happen at the site, how that engineer would have conducted a traffic analysis. That can't be considered here. That information wasn't presented before the hearing examiner. There was no, no declaration submitted by the tribe to support that analysis. The analysis just now wasn't done under penalty of perjury. This isn't a setting in which you can take additional information. The applicant hasn't had an opportunity to respond to that analysis in the context of what was just presented. There are a host of reasons why you shouldn't and cannot consider that analysis. The Board also is part of that new evidence, demonstrative is fine. It can't be used to present new substantive evidence in the way that the appellant did just now. I want to turn to the zoning question. The, the principal dispute can be broken down into two separate questions. One is whether the uses proposed by the project qualify within any of the four different subcategories of the different subcategories of the relevant statutory provision. Two of those are relevant here under O two O sub one C. Truck and heavy equipment service and repair is a permitted use. Under one D, a permitted use is commercial service uses such as banks, restaurants, cafes, bars, taverns, and service stations. The project proposes to include over sixty truck stop, uh, truck parking places, just over thirty retail passenger vehicle parking spaces, fueling pump stations for trucks and vehicles, a convenience store and a restaurant. The truck aspect of the proposed project falls within, within both C and D. Truck service includes things like fueling stations. Service stations also include, and this is addressed in the briefing, fueling pumps. So truck fueling pumps falls within both of those. Fueling pumps for passenger vehicles falls within the one D section as a, as part of a service station. The restaurant is explicitly included within subsection one D, which says that a permitted use includes commercial service uses such as restaurants. The only question appears to be whether a convenience store qualifies as a commercial service use. Appellant's argument is that a convenience store cannot be included within that category because it isn't expressed explicitly listed. The problem with that is that the statute, the code identifies that commercial service uses with examples, banks, restaurants, taverns, service stations. That isn't an exhaustive list. It has to be something like those types of uses. The hearing examiner concluded that a convenience store is like those types of uses. The appellant hasn't identified a plausible argument for why it's not. A convenience store is a commercial use in the same way as a bank is a commercial use. People come in and out, people stay, people purchase things. Convenience stores are frequently, almost always part of a service station. All fueling pump, retail fueling pump stations include a convenience store. And they sell food just like restaurants, cafes, bars, and taverns. When interpreting what this code provision means, you have to include the entire context of the relevant language of the provision. A convenience store clearly falls within that subsection one D. The second part of the analysis is whether the proposed use primarily serves the industrial uses in the area. Appellant's argument is that there cannot be any outside use because otherwise that doesn't meet the industrial use purpose. That doesn't reflect a coherent interpretation of the code. And we set the reasons out in our briefing. There are four different types of uses outlined in that subsection. Partial delivery service, ambulance service, truck and heavy equipment service, commercial service uses. What would it mean for a partial delivery surface, service to primarily serve nearby industrial customers? Would they have to turn away residential, non-industrial users? How would they determine who is an industrial user or not? Would it matter if someone is a customer for the nearby industrial use? And how would they determine whether that person met the criteria for who qualifies to use that partial delivery service? Would an ambulance service have to respond to calls only in neighboring industrial uses? The problem with, with this definition, and we highlight this in the briefing as well, is that in the area, in the vicinity, vicinity of this project, there are three pockets of planned industrial zoning. Each of those are surrounded by a sea of residential zones and housing developments. All of those uses will, all of those additional adjacent uses will use what's available in the planned industrial development. So if you have a partial delivery service explicitly allowed under that subsection one, that will guarantee, you will be guaranteed to have other residential uses. And by volume, those residential uses are far more numerous than the nearby industrial uses. So I think this is a problem with the code. It's, it's not clear on its face, but you have to interpret it as it's written. And you have to interpret the code based on the context of the words, other, other relevant portions of the code. So when you look to see whether a truck stop is a commercial service with, that primarily serves the industrial park, you have to look at, okay, well, what does that mean in the context of a partial delivery service that primarily uses, that primarily serves other uses? A bank that primarily serves other uses. A truck stop is, is much closer to what's permitted than those other things because those other things are permitted outright. The truck stop is as well. The, the hearing examiner correctly concluded that staff is owed deference on this. There's nothing in that subsection one D that requires explicit findings. That's in, that, that's a, it's an argument that appellant conjured out from nowhere. There's nothing saying that specific findings are required before a certain type of use is going to be permitted. You have before you an explanation of the types of uses that will be included in the project, fueling pumps, convenience store, restaurant. The question is whether those uses fit within the four corners of the code. As I've just explained, they do. I want to address briefly the tribe's argument. They didn't raise this in their oral argument, but that this board should not consider the response briefing. The typical standard that applied by every court and every body is whether there's been prejudice to the opposing party. The tribe wasn't prejudiced by a three minute delay in receiving the briefing. They had plenty of time to respond. They don't argue otherwise or identify any potential prejudice. I don't have anything further for you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'd ask that you affirm, the hearing examiner dismissed this appeal as a matter of law.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I, I have one question. Do traffic impact fees contribute towards, are being assessed against this?
Yes, correct.
Project? And then those are used to address for mitigation, is that true?
Right. Traffic impact fees will be based on trip counts and that will be used for mitigation.
Thank you.
I think, I think one of the concerns that may, that appellant is trying to pull on is a political concern. What happens if the traffic analysis isn't adequate? Staff or county staff are working with the appellant to address any concerns that were raised by this appeal. The question for you is whether the appeal should stand. And the answer to that is no. That doesn't mean the additional analysis isn't being considered. It's just not relevant before this body because of the standing question and because of the evidence presented below.
Thank you. Three and a half minutes left for the appellant to make any rebuttal. And that rebuttal should be limited to the points raised by the applicant.
I'll, I'll do my best, Chair. I must say, it is rare that I'm accused of incoherence so early in the morning. Usually that's in the evening, but it was a long drive up this morning. I'm going to take the issues in reverse order. As the applicant mentioned, there is acknowledgement of the deficiency of the existing traffic analysis. In the record for this project is a draft response to our letter from Kittlesons and Associates, which spells out to a T the fact that the applicant admits there are deficiencies in the traffic counts. And therefore, the fees which are being assessed are incorrect. And the mitigation measures, we can't even begin to judge whether or not those are correct. And the applicant argues that somehow that can be bifurcated from this process, and that's just not true. What you have in front of you is an existing land use approval. And absent that land use approval being pulled so that this subsequent analysis can occur and additional conditions of approval are issued, which importantly, will open up a subsequent appeal period, absent all that occurring, none of this new analysis that your staff is conducting with the applicant to ensure that the traffic counts are correct can even occur. So as a foundational matter, this traffic analysis needs to be redone and the applicant has acknowledged as such. Now, I'd like to take the argument that somehow the applicant didn't have proper notice of the traffic analysis. It was in the hearing examiner's file before the hearing examiner issued their decision. Whether or not the hearing examiner chose to rely on that information is immaterial for the purpose of determining whether or not it was in the record. As the applicant acknowledged, they had full and complete opportunity to respond and are actually in the process of doing so. They've engaged in so much analysis, in fact, that there's a draft report in the project file highlighting the errors in the traffic analysis. So I, I can't take with face value the argument that somehow the applicant was prejudiced by the timely filing of our traffic analysis. With regards to the uses, the critical issue here is that Thurston County decided to apply a very particular industrial zone to this property. You have generalized industrial zones and you have generalized commercial zones, where these uses would be permitted by right without the need for any additional analysis. But you did not apply that here. And with regards to the question of who should be responsible for determining whether or not the uses are properly inward or outwardly facing, well, that responsibility falls on your staff. And that's exactly the types of findings that need to be made. In fact, your P I zone does require a staff report with findings to ensure that everything has been complied with. And absent that analysis, it is impossible to defer to anything. So in summation, the traffic analysis that Kittleson and Associates prepared was properly in the file. The applicant was aware of it. The applicant is actively working with the county to address the deficiencies that they acknowledge exist. We are merely asking that you take the necessary steps to pull the project approvals to allow for that subsequent analysis to occur, to ensure that when new conditions of approval are issued for the project, they properly comply with the Thurston County Code. And you need to take the step today to pull the land use approvals in order to allow for that analysis to happen. Additionally, we would strongly recommend that in that interregnum period, you recommend to staff that they make the necessary findings to ensure.
Time's up, sir.
That the uses are permitted in the P I zone. Thank you very much.
We'd like to thank everybody for being here and participating. The board will issue a trition, written decision on or before September thirteenth, twenty twenty four. And this proceeding is concluded. Okay, we are going to, at this juncture, enter into an executive session. It is not on the agenda, but it's connected to the item we just heard. The legal framework for that is R C W forty two thirty one forty two. And if a conclusion of the chapter conflicts with provisions of any other statute, provisions of this chapter shall control, provided that the chapter shall not apply to subsection two, portion of a meeting of a quasi judicial body which relates to a quasi judicial matter between named parties as distinguished from a matter having general effect on the public or on a class or group. It's oddly constructed, but I'm assuming it means that we don't fall within that piece and we're under an appropriate subsection of forty two thirty one forty. I'd ask prosecuting attorney. See, Scott Cushing's here. Is that inappropriate?
What that means is that this particular discussion is not subject to the O P M A.
Okay. So with that, we're going to be stopping a live stream. Something done. Something done.
Okay, it's 10:13 a.m. We're back on schedule for next piece of the agenda, which is Commissioner Items. And you know, there's one specific that's been outlined and it relates to ARPA spending. So I'm gonna start with that. If there's others, we'll get to them, but turn for the County Manager.
Yeah, thanks so much, Chair. Commissioners, we have, I'll let them introduce themselves here.
Good morning. Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell.
Hi, good morning. Summer Miller, interim budget and finance manager.
We've need you aware of some ARPA spending decisions that need to take place, but it's been several weeks, so we wanted to regroup. But to jump into this presentation, what I will say is that we need to make a correction. Maybe about three weeks ago, in reference to the medical bank request for 170,000, I think in the transition of our staff, we believed that it was not ARPA eligible, but the team did some more research, and so I communicated that verbally to all of you. The team did some research and we believe that it could be ARPA eligible, they meet some of the requirements. We'll get to that in just a minute, but I just wanted to make sure that you have that information as you're looking at this.
On that topic, I see that in the latest senior news, which I saw yesterday, I don't know when it came out, said they were within like 50,000 or something.
I saw the same thing. I brought that up at the last meeting and I thought they had gotten closer than 170. As time has rolled on, so they may not, they may not have the same level of need.
Can I have a, we've sent some emails to, I forgot, the executive.
Joyce Williams.
Joyce, yeah. And so we have a call scheduled with her, so we can talk about that in detail.
So it sounds like maybe we can help them out, if they can meet that criteria.
Yes. So if we open up the presentation, staff prepare the first sheet. These are potential, well, these are projects that have funding that we're suggesting that are rolled over and that funding continues to be used for these projects. We go to the next slide. This is where there's potential for reallocation of funds.
Are we gonna share this slide, so for the public?
These slides are hot off the press, so I could tell me who to send them to.
Oh, no, I was just wondering for the, for the public.
Yeah, you're right. You were referring to the dozen. To Amy, and we'll get them up, so that we can go back and show the slides. Thank you so much, Commissioner. So the next slide that I'm referring to, that we'll get up in just a few minutes, it talks about ARPA options, potential reallocation of funding. It lists a total of seven different projects for a total of 1.337 million. And it's, this, these dollars that staff are suggesting that we reallocate. And we have a proposal for the board's consideration. Next slide from the presentation, this using 1.14 of the money for overlay preservation project for Public Works. And appreciate Public Works and they're working with our budget team. They do have a project that is ready to go, that they could use this funding for, which would help, again, just get a project that needs the funding to be funded. What I want to highlight though is time is of the essence for them. They need to get rolling on this. And in talking with Jennifer, if the board was able to give direction today, they do believe they'd be able to meet the timeframes to get this project funded and meet the ARPA requirements. And as part of our recommendation for that reallocation of funding, and Amy, we sent you. There was some interest to have a notice of funding opportunity available for potential groups that may qualify. And so there's a recommendation to use a portion of the funding for that amount. Right now, we're contemplating, some are correcting if I'm wrong, but it's 200,000, right?
Yes.
Around 200,000 that could be available for groups. What we would do is work with the budget team to put a call out. We've got the ARPA eligible, our finance, our budget team, excuse me, would create an internal working group that would look at the request, vet them for ARPA eligibility, and then also bring those recommendations to the board for final consideration.
I have a question, Commissioner.
It's not like a Christmas tree.
So, real quick, you went through a lot of stuff quickly. Are we gonna go back and ask questions? Okay, Commissioner.
One of the things that we've been struggling with is our fairgrounds and how to adequately address that. Is add it all on your, I don't see it anywhere, and I'm just wondering if that's a possibility.
We'd have to look.
I don't know what the fund commissioner says about that.
I believe that we've reviewed the fairgrounds in the past, but I'd have to look back and.
Well, we used the fairgrounds during our COVID event considerably. We used them a lot. It was a big, it was a big asset to dealing with space and open space. And so I think as long as we're trying to do something that could be multi-use, could be used for what the fair needs and for any future type problem, it would fall within the guidelines. So, that's all.
Would the fair qualify for any lost revenue during, because we didn't have the fair during COVID, right?
So it's a, it's a government entity and the only lost revenue that it would qualify for would be the 10 million in lost revenue that the county was able to carve out.
Already spent.
And, yes, that is spent.
I think Commissioners, if there are things you want us to research about eligibility or to reshape this recommendation, we're happy to do that. Like when we did the research quick on the medical bank, we thought it was not eligible. Just, I know this team is really busy right now with putting budget in, working through TC Connect. So I appreciate them putting this together on quick notice. But we're happy to take anything back and research it and come back with some options, if that's what you'd like.
I would just add that time is of the essence at this point, because if we're going to go forward with the road projects, it needs to get under contract. If we're going to go forward with a community opportunity, we need to get that rolling, so there's time to get it under contract.
And this is just, you're doing both those two things, right?
Ye- yes. Our recommendation is that you put the bulk of the money toward the road projects and then open up a small amount for the community.
We go through the slides, I just want to frame the conversation. Next slide, please. That's the dollar amount that, so if we go back one slide, just answer the question.
Sorry.
Going, going, gone. It's the rollerball works.
Okay. And I can't see that.
Give it to Rob.
Yeah, I can't see up there. Sorry, Rob. Thank you.
So, just as a side point here, what does the not invoice mean? We've been trying to get that, since I know Young and Heart Theater, $2,500 for like three years.
Yes.
We keep failing to get to them.
I've tried to.
The theater and they have just never sent us.
This one, we're.
So.
Yeah, we'll get to the next slide in just a sec, but.
At one point, we had to move it from one source to another source. Like, it didn't qualify for ARPA because they didn't submit their documents showing that, how many beds they'd bring in. So we said, well, we're still gonna give them that money, and we moved it to ARPA.
That's right.
And now I'm seeing that they still don't have their money.
They've never billed that.
And I'm drinking out of my coffee cup every day.
All they had to do was send us a bill and.
And I made a donation to that, too.
Yeah, well, that's how I got the, that's how I got my cup. I made a donation.
There's a few decision points for the commission. Number one is, staff's recommendation is to roll these funds forward to, for the, for the purposes that are stated there for the projects. We believe we'll be able to spend those dollar amounts down. And so that's, that's one of the decision points.
So what is the ad funding for diversion services? That money's going to, prosecutor had a diversion program, the pre-trial services has a diversion program, public defense has a.
So you may recall that you earmarked 200,000 for the prosecutor to have a contract for diversion. That amount, since the prosecutor had not a year ago entered into a contract, the amount was reduced to 100,000. The prosecutor still has not entered into a contract, but says that they are on, just, just any time now, there will be a contract that they're under. So we are proposing to continue to have that 100,000 available for the prosecutor's contract for diversion services. And this is to support the diversion of cases in the backlog.
I guess, can we go back to the, I have some questions in regards to the Thurston County nonprofit and small business grants and the Thurston County tourism grant section.
Sure. Rob, before we do, if we go, so just to high overview of the decisions, we'd want the commissions, Commissioners to say, roll this funding over. Next slide, Rob. What do we want to do with the 1.337? Next slide, Rob. Thanks so much. Staff recommendation to use the 1.14 for Public Works overlay preservation project. Those are the two projects. And then to get to Commissioner McGee's question, there was some thought about, do we use some funding for groups that have reached out for ARPA dollars? And to Robin's comment, we'd have to move fairly quickly to get this out, but it can be done. And so, your question, please.
Okay, so I, I just have a couple of questions based on this. And first is, do we even have capacity to be able to do this? And I'm not talking on funding capacity, but staffing capacity, to be able to form an RFP that goes out into the community, have a team go through that.
It'll be a stretch.
Especially with TC Connect, the budget, new staff, right? It, I, I'm just wondering if, if this is realistic. And then, I guess my next part of that question is, I remember when we went through this the first time, staff had to really be on top of the external entities, the nonprofits, the small business, to be able to spend that money down and get us the information that we needed. And it took a lot for them to spend that money down where it would qualify under those treasury, specific treasury guidelines that they were, they were, you know, trying to spend this money under. And so.
It does take a lot of shepherding, Commissioner.
And so, do the nonprofits and small business also have the capacity to be able to spend that funding in a very tight timeline? Last time we did this, it took a while for several small businesses and nonprofits and these community grants to be able, to be spent, right? And, and, and so I'm just wondering, it's, there's two factors, is internal and also the external. And I don't want to put us in a situation where all of a sudden, it's like we have to pull away those grants because they weren't able to spend it in time, and then we're now again scrambling to allocate it somewhere else.
Commissioner, your comments are all very astute. Now, just answer them in brief. With all that's going on for our budget team, there's a lot of transition taking place. Not just with new staff, but a new budget system that is still being worked on and it's taking a lot of time from our team. And then we're in the midst of getting all the budget information in. Again, we are working through a new process with our auditor. And, you know, anytime you, you work on a process change, there's a lot of work. So this was in response, and I really appreciate the team's hard work. This was in response, I tried to be responsive to some of the Commissioner's suggestions. But if we had it our way from a staff level, we'd prefer not to have to go through another process at this time.
Can you go back to the first slide?
Absolutely.
About the first chart?
Yes, sir.
So right there, decreased corp backlog, 301,595 is a very specific number. Like, where is that coming from? Is that gonna, is that what they need? Is that just, can they use more if we had more? What, what, where are we at with that corp backlog number? That's a vague, you know, obviously line item in a sense.
So that's an excellent question. We haven't met recently with the, the group, the stakeholders, if you will.
These are what's been allocated prior, correct?
This is what we expect to be left at the end of this year in the funding that the board authorized for the corp backlog.
That's why it's a specific number, is because they're saying that this is the, the balance amount in, in what was originally.
Are they on track to just, are they feeling good about, you're not sure, you haven't checked in with them?
So they, we've not asked them where they're at. We don't know how big the backlog is at this moment. We have heard from John Toonheim that the need to work those cases will continue into the future. You saw in the last budget cycle, the requests from both public defense and the prosecutor's office to continue those FTEs. They've asked to do that with the public safety sales tax funds once the ARPA money is gone. What we're, and this 300,000 would not begin to cover what their needs are to continue to work these cases for another two years. But this is what is left of what the board authorized.
As follow-up, Commissioner, we will have conversations with the folks with these funds just to make sure that we have a plan on how to spend this down.
Cause the, so obviously public safety tax money can only go to public defense and prosecuting attorney. And the courts didn't, weren't very happy about that because they're going to have an overflow effect of increased law enforcement and case filings, et cetera. They were part, I know when we initially said court backlog, it was for everybody. It wasn't just for prosecuting defense. It was for clerk, court.
That's right, the clerk and.
So I guess my question is, is this a way, I mean, if there were additional funding, because Commissioner Mejia convinces us, we don't have, I mean, I'm just being facetious. But your arguments were obviously, you know, on point. But if we had extra money, is that a way to help with some of the court's needs? Because they're not, you know, they're not going to have the ability to ask us to shift public safety sales tax money over.
What we could do, commissioners, is break this into two parts. We could determine if the commission wants to fund the Public Works Overlay project into what amount. Then we can look at what remaining funds there are and give the team some time to do some. If we don't want to do a notice of funding opportunity for nonprofits, work internally with our departments to get some information from them. So we can come back with some recommendations if that's the commission's. I just don't want to speak operationally when we haven't had the conversations.
I'm just throwing it out. I mean, if, if we're trying to think about, you know, you're always weighing things. Like if it's like, if we're actually thinking about pulling back from the idea of the community grants, which I know we would all support if we had the time and capacity. I'm just pointing out that there might be another really valid, legitimate place to plug that funding into based on the needs of our courts. Go ahead. I, I don't think it's that we, you know, I wouldn't not want to support the community funding aspect, but I think it's a, a point made well by Commissioner Mejia that like, we're in this position because we couldn't get this money out. Now we have to come up with a plan that will 100% get this money out. And, you know, we're already, this isn't, you know, we're already Plan C or D. So like, I think we do need to have a plan that is conservative and secures our, our ability to get the money out.
Commissioner Edwards.
I, I don't disagree with that at all. What's, what's going on with the daycare, with EDC not being able to fulfill something? I just, I was reading a little bit, I think yesterday about that, in my mail.
Oh, you're, you're speaking about the internal auditor working through.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's a separate issue on, and we can bring that to, to you. But that's a separate issue where they're going back and auditing, did everyone meet the eligibility in how that money was spent?
It sounds like most of them did.
Most of them did. There's somebody that was outside of the date and so there's a portion of money that.
So is that included in here or what's coming back or?
That, that's because that, that funding has to be recaptured. Or rather, that's going to be a decision point, a discussion point with commissioners.
Can that, okay, so maybe it's been spent. So can part of that come out to cover that bill? Is that what you're saying?
We'd have to research that, Commissioner. I can't answer that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that's.
Just a, a thought that because of the overlay projects, another possibility could be that we have already obligated funds or obligated projects which meet the deadline for like the Tam O Shan and Boston Harbor projects. If they have any overages, that might be a way to kind of just those projects hold and simplify the process. I'm not sure.
Why can't we just say like, okay, do a million dollars towards overlay or public works or something like that? Then we've got a smaller amount to try and figure out.
So the, the restriction that we have at this point is whatever we're going to do has to be under contract as of December 31st of this year.
I mean, get a million dollars under contract right off the bat.
Yeah, we can, if we go forward a couple of slides.
The contracts have to be very specific.
Sorry. We need to resurrect our Zoom meeting.
So, so while we get to the slide, I'll say that it's not enough. The federal government has made it very clear that it's not enough for the board to appropriate the funds or to allocate the funds. We have to have actual contracts in place with vendors or sub recipients. So it's gotta be, it can't just be a million dollars to figure it out.
Somebody's already doing the paving or something. Can't we just extend that contract? Says 10% and they're doing 12 million or something.
Or could approve a contract amendment for certain things.
Well, I, I think back to, we've discussed with Public Works and I do appreciate Jennifer's hard work in laying out what the needs are. The recommendation, and commissioners can prove it or not approve it, but the recommendation is to use the 1.14 for the projects. If you go next slide, Rob. There we go. That's something that she's prepared to, I believe she can accomplish.
Then that just leaves us with a smaller amount to figure out.
Correct.
My, I, I don't know. I think we ought to do it. We need to do roads. So it's my two cents.
One of the other rules is that once we hit January 1st of 2026, 2025, January 21st, 2025, for any money that's obligated, if we can't spend it, it can still be shifted, but only to other projects that are obligated. So using the utility example, if for some reason we couldn't spend 1.14 million on these road overlay projects, and I totally expect that that would happen. But if anything there couldn't get spent, we could shift it to one of the utilities that's currently under contract. It can only be shifted to another obligated item, but you can move it around if for some reason what it's obligated on December 31st of this year is too much. They've created some very odd rules around this.
You're saying that there's chunks, Rob, of, you're saying there's chunks of Tam O Shan, for example, that aren't already ARPA funded?
Yes.
Yes.
That could accommodate.
It could accommodate it. I'm just, I was, it was just an idea for some of the flexibility that would not require additional obligation for another project. I don't know their budget to actual at this point in time.
Yeah, and that's what I'm reluctant to speak to because we, I mean, this is what we prepared. If the board wants us to go back and research some other things, we can happily put that together. We just don't have it together right now.
Well, why wouldn't we want to do this, for an example, to get rid of the bulk of it?
We do.
Yeah.
Well, we, we, we're one direction from you. Right.
And then the second portion.
So that leaves about 200,000.
There you go.
Okay, so then let's go back to the second slide, one more slide, sorry. Is the board in agreement to roll this over for these programs? Or did you, did you want us to do more research on these?
When you say roll it over, I guess I don't exactly know.
Well.
Continue to spend on these particular activities.
Well, yeah, but if they're not going to get there, we've got to figure out a plan, right?
I think, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
We believe they will get there. If we get an indication that they're not, that any of these projects won't get there, we will bring that back quickly.
These are just the last scraps of what they haven't spent it?
Correct.
Yes.
So it could be pulled to something else, or we could keep going with what we said we were doing, which I think I'm okay with.
Yeah, and this still leaves an additional 200,000 and that's where.
That's the discussion next.
Figure, yeah.
I have a question on that. You said if, for some reason, there's like, oh, like they can't spend this, we'll bring that back quickly to us. Would that be another thing we need to know before the end of this year? So that if it's not going to be spent next year, we need to have it under contract somewhere else?
Yeah, Commissioner, that's a great question. We would bring this back like within a week.
Okay. Yeah, then I'm good with that.
We got it. We have to, I think the team's all aware. We have to hustle to the finish line.
Right.
We don't want anything that's unspent.
And, and just for an example, the corp backlog, there's going to be at the end of this year about 300,000 left out of a $7 million allocation. They were slow to start spending it, but once they got the people hired, it, it started going quickly. So we think they absolutely can spend this once we hit next year.
I think they were slow to spend it because it was a very tough hiring market during that time. Everyone was putting in resources to decrease their corp backlog. And a lot of these same positions were out in all the counties and, and other jurisdictions, so.
Hard to find attorneys.
It was hard to find staffing during that time, so that's.
So, Rob, if we go to the last slide. Oh, I'm sorry. Did we get a decision on that to, to continue? I saw.
I, I, I think so.
One, two, three, four. Got it. Thanks. So last decision is, is the 200, understanding that there is a desire to try to get money out to the community, but we're really up against our current dynamics here internally. I don't think, you know, six, seven weeks ago, anyone would have estimated we'd be this crunched for time, this crunch for resources and so much going on. So Commissioner Mejia's comments are absolutely on point where we are pretty stretched right now. And so the discussion then goes to the commissioners, you know, there's 200K. I've heard fair.
Medical bank.
Medical bank. Courts, courts, court needs. Is there anything else that the commission would like us to research that we can come back early next week with a, with a discussion about what we believe we can accomplish for 200 into these categories or any other categories?
How long can we extend the SCRAM project for as well?
What kind of?
The SCRAM. That's, that's the district court. That's the substance abuse monitoring item. So let's see.
I know they're, they, we approved some funding.
District court, was it?
Yeah. So I'm wondering, is there?
So you had originally allocated a million dollars through June. They had spent about 753,000. We think they're going to have about 300,000. Oh, they, they're still spending this year. So at the end of this year, they'd only have 61,000 left. They would definitely be able to spend more than that, maybe to the tune of 3 to 400,000.
SCRAM, right?
Yeah.
If you go back to the first slide, I think it's listed there. Sorry, I didn't catch that.
Yeah. SCRAM.
SCRAM.
Oh, you SCRAM.
It, it's, the title under ARPA is substance abuse monitoring, but it's the SCRAM program.
It's a crime program, yeah.
Still learning the acronyms still.
So that's another word I would like to.
Put it on your list.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, got it. So we have four, fair, medical bank, court, needs, SCRAM. We can come back with doing the research to make sure that everything qualifies and then a recommendation on how to distribute the 200K.
Nurse family partnership. Is there?
That, that is, we can look at it.
Yeah. Other jurisdictions used it, I saw, and so I, because they were trying to address their backlog in that sense and wondering if something we could get reimbursed for as we've been trying to work.
Have to fit under the employee rules and we could look at it.
Throwing ideas out there, I just.
Right, so we have five ideas, 200K to spend.
That'll lead it up.
Pretty quick.
And these would be.
I just want the path to least resistance. I want to get the money out there.
So we'll come back next week after we do the research on these, Chair, if that's okay? And so out of the three decision points, we, we have the two. One, it's really time sensitive for Public Works is up and running. And then we'll come back next week with an overview of researching each of these to make sure there are a lot of people.
Yeah, for me, the fair and equipment bank are the priority, but they have to be eligible.
Okay.
If they're not, then, then we've got some backups, so that's good.
Sounds good. And as a county manager, I would support fair, having seen the opportunities we have there to continue to invest and make it a site that has opportunities all year long. I know we have our manager in Thomas and Cooper who's excited about developing new areas. So those could be opportunity dollars. Okay, that, that's that item. Do we have time for any other commissioner items that need to be addressed? Commissioner Edwards.
I just want to report on the tax title property.
Yeah.
I went out there yesterday and the only person that I was able to contact and talk to was the fire commissioner from Almane District who owns one of the surrounding pieces. Although the assessor has lots on both sides, this is a little over a half acre lot. And these are building lots. The one immediately laid next to it is 523,000. The one next to that is 441. There's a $329,000. These are homes on these lots. And 253,000, so they are definitely building lots. They have water service to them through the Cougar Mountain Water Company. And so the assessed value of this particular lot that was to be sold at our meeting yesterday is $98,000, I think. And it is a buildable lot. There's nothing wrong with it. So I am totally stumped about if something slipped through the cracks here. But I'm definitely going to be asking the board to remove that item and figure out something else to do, which will be a better benefit for the taxpayers of Thurston County. So.
Send your map around?
Yeah, you can have all my material that I've got on it. All of you, if you want, you all, would you all like to have it? It's, it just shows assessed valuation.
Didn't the treasurer say something about like it couldn't accommodate a septic or something?
Well, that's because there's, if, if a well was needed, I guess, then you have the proximity problem, you know, they'd have to have septic on one end of the lot. The lot's 200 feet long and 100 feet wide, a little bit more than that actually. So it's a little over a half acre.
But there's no well needed because it's on the utility already?
And so I don't get where they're coming up with no water service. The latecomer fee and hookup to that particular water company is around $4,000, which is about, you know, what you might have to pay elsewhere. So I'm a little stumped on how this got this far. I can only guess that somebody made a mistake, but.
There, there was already a negotiated sale price?
$3,000.
Are you saying the value, the assessed value is 98,000?
Yes, and the adjoining properties on each side are 500 and 400,000.
With houses.
With houses on them.
Yeah.
Nice houses. This isn't, you know, I don't know.
Seems a valid question.
So we'll have to figure out what we're going to do about that. But I just want to make sure that this doesn't, this sale doesn't go forward.
You want to wait until Tuesday?
I'll, I'll bring it up again. I just wanted my seatmates to know that I, I said I'd work on it.
It's on the consent agenda currently or?
And I did work on it.
It is on the consent agenda currently and.
We can address it on Tuesday morning.
Or we can pull it right now, or pull it Tuesday morning.
Something, Jeff said something about we needed to vote it down or up to, then he could move forward.
Yeah, because there's a negotiated deal and if we shoot it down, then that cancels that deal.
I don't want to, you know, I don't understand $3,000.
I think they have to negotiate based on the delinquent taxes. Oh, they can't go into the assessed value of the property. I think that's how the process works. delinquent taxes. Oh, they can't go into the assessed value of the property. I think that's how the process works. It's, it's, they have to. I'm looking towards the minimal. Okay.
The minimal.
I think this is a conversation we should have with the treasurer on Tuesday.
I agree.
And we'll vote to remove it if that's what is appropriate based on what we had learned.
Why don't these things go to auction?
Well, that's apparently somehow I heard on some of these, they're kind of on an auction list and nobody bids, or bids or something, but nobody pays attention.
I've gone to the auctions and like you're the only person there sometimes.
Well, there's hundreds of properties that are listed, I guess. I don't know much about it myself. I just want to make sure that we're fair and bring in the best, uh, resources for the county, because there's no reason there can't have been another five hundred thousand dollar house there. It's a buildable lot that brings in asset to our community.
I think what the treasurer said is, they've been in auction beforehand. And I, I think it'll be better to explain the process on Tuesday. But this is, and that's kind of how they land here, is they've already come to auction, no one bid on them.
I'll offer thirty-one hundred to the county right now.
Well, yeah, but, uh, well, anyway, the, the Fire Commissioner happened, he, he said he has a, uh, easement all the way across this for something that he's doing because he has adjoining property. So it sounds like there's other complications, but let's just not rush into this.
Commissioners, we have.
That is interesting.
Travis reviewing the question that came out of that conversation.
Okay.
He's looking into it, so I can have Amy, um, cue Travis up to be part of that discussion on Tuesday when we review each of this.
Okay, sounds good. Other commissioner items for this morning? Okay. It's on the agenda, so we're adjourned.
Thank you.